Thank you for joining us this evening, tonight in a regular scheduled council meeting of the Park City City Council, September 12th, 2017, at 7:00 PM. Daniella, would you call the roll?
John Leonard.
Here.
George Glover.
Here.
Gary Aldrich.
Here.
Melvin Kerr.
Here.
Tom Jones.
Here.
George Capps.
Here.
Joel Pumphrey.
Here.
Jim Schrader.
Here.
The quorum is present, Your Honor.
Thank you. Tonight Pastor Kit Berry is going to lead in the invocation and Councilman Melvin Kerr is going to lead in the pledge. If everybody please stand.
Bow your heads, please. Father God, we come here tonight, pray for these government officials that are present here tonight, also other community leaders throughout our towns, cities, and states, and our nation. Save those who are not yet Your own. Give those in authority wisdom in every decision and help them think clearly. Grant them discernment and common sense so they'll be strong and effective leaders. Help them to lead and govern with integrity. May their integrity guide them and keep them on track. Be merciful to give us leaders who are spirit-filled and follow Your principles, direct their steps according to Your word, for their decisions have great impact on our lives. Be their defender and protector and keep them always on guard. Help those who are Christians to be strong and courageous, stand firm in their faith, and influence in others in your kingdom. In the name of Jesus Christ, our Lord and Savior, amen.
(Inaudible) of the United States of America, and due to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The next item on the agenda is approval of the agenda.
A motion to approve.
Okay.
Second.
Gary. Got a motion and a second. Not seeing any further discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. And the motion passes eight zero. Tonight, the chief has a couple of things for us underneath awards and presentations. I'll let the chief take it.
Mr. Mayor, council members, wanted to take this opportunity to introduce to you a couple of new police officers on our department and hopefully make this a pattern for the future as we hire new officers so you have an opportunity to see them when they come on. And also we have a promotion this evening. So I'd ask Luke Tibbetts if he'd come forward, please. Luke has just graduated from the academy on September the first. He still has quite a bit of his field training ahead of him and hopefully soon he'll be out on his own here in about three months or so. So Luke, glad to have you aboard.
Glad to be here.
And Shane, if you'd come forward, please. Shane has worked with us for several months now as code enforcement officer. Some of you may have seen him around the community. He applied to be a police officer, went through the entire background process just like everyone else. And Shane's done a great job for us. We hate to lose him as a code enforcement officer, so we have an opening now. So if anyone is interested in that, watching on TV, that'll be posted very soon. But Shane will be going to the academy on October 2nd and then graduating about three and a half months after that. So Shane, congratulations.
Thank you, Chief.[244.12][244.12](Applause).
This is Officer Brandon Green. Brandon has been with us a little over four years now, I believe. Brandon is being promoted to the rank of sergeant from the rank of police officer. Brandon's done a great job for us. He's got a very level head and is respected well by his peers. They already look up to him as a leader, so it's somewhat of a natural for us to promote him to sergeant. So saying that, Officer Green, I'm going to pin you with his badge. Hopefully we do this and don't need EMS afterwards. That's the goal. Got something else for you here.
Thank you, Chief, and congratulations Sergeant Green on your promotion. Next item on the agenda is public forum. Tonight we have one person signed up to speak at public forum, Steve Brown.
Yeah, I'm going to make this quick. I know you guys have a busy agenda tonight, so just a couple of things. First of all, I just got back from Houston with a pet rescue group. We're taking one more truckload of food and donations down, so if anybody watching this at home has any interest, Cheryl's the person to call, 734-0679. She does have my permission to give out her number, of course. So if you have any donations, give her a call. We're going to be taking one last load down this weekend. If there is one thing I've taken away from going to Houston, it's anybody out there watching with your pets. We have, we might, we don't have hurricanes, but of course we have tornadoes, other natural disasters. Chip your pets, make sure all your vaccinations are up to date. Every issue I saw in Houston could have been resolved if the owner of the pet would have chipped it. So, you know, make sure you do that. Second of all, 4th of July, we have a committee meeting tomorrow night. I've discovered I'm losing one person off my committee, so if anybody either wants to add an event or an item or whatever to the 4th of July, we're at the Best Western at 53rd in the commons area in the middle. Come out and see us there. We'd love to also have volunteers or committee members sign up because we're going to be down to four after 2018, so I definitely need to get more people on the committee. So 4th of July, come out and see us, Best Western tomorrow night, 6:00 PM. Thanks for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. That was all we had signed up for this evening for public forum, so we'll move on to staff reports. And we'll start with our human resources manager, Dana Walton. Dana?
Thank you very much. I really appreciate the opportunity to speak before council this evening, and most especially when I can follow what just happened here when we have highlighted our staff. And I am fortunate to be able to talk about our staff. I've been with the city for 11 years, and I do not have enough opportunities to brag about the great staff that we do have. We are a lean city as far as our staffing goes. We do currently have open positions. As the chief will be talking later on the agenda, we do have some police officer positions open. All of our positions are posted on HRE Partners, so anyone in the community that is interested in working for the city, they need to go on that site. Currently, we do have an administrative assistant receptionist position, water tech one position. We have a code enforcement position, you see why we just have that, and two police officer positions that some of those will be posted shortly, so look for that. I handed out a copy of the organizational chart, which is on the screen, but I understand it is very hard to read, those small little letters that are on there. And I just thought it would be a good opportunity once again for the council to be able to see how the city is staffed. And I know that we have some new council members that may not be as familiar with this. If you look at the organizational chart, I do want to point out, at the very top, we always put our citizens, because we work for our citizens. And we all know that, and we take that very seriously and respect that fact, and we're proud to work for the city of Park City. Then we have yourselves, the city council, the mayor. You see, excuse me, you see on that top line, all of those committees and boards that the mayor is responsible for oversight. In addition to that, the city treasurer, the city attorney, you've got the court, starting with the municipal judge, the prosecuting attorney, and the public defender. When you come down to the city, you just follow that down, and you see at the top we have our city administrator and then my position. We've got the senior director, Madison, which you see, and she gives reports. And we have a terrific senior center. I think people would agree to that. It is just always busy. The parking lot was busy again today. It's exciting to see what happens at that senior center. We, if you follow that down, you can see all of the departments that we have, which include, we've got our department heads, our finance department, Daniella, and she's also our city clerk, our public works department. You've received regular reporting from Rick Norman, myself in the HR department, I'm the lone ranger there, and then our police department. And you see how our police department is structured. We have our building inspection department and then our planning department. I don't want to go into more detail unless you have specific questions on that, because it's pretty self-explanatory. Once again, we have a great team. We do have some employees that have worked for the city for 30 years, which is great to say that we have that longevity. I do want to say that we also have a very selective hiring process. We've got great new employees that have come on board as well. We're training this week. We will have outside training that's coming in, giving us training on harassment prevention. So we try to make sure that all of our employees are trained appropriately. And then I just wanted to kind of follow up with some questions on the benefits and the insurance, kind of to give you an idea of where we're at, my add on that. You know, we've talked about how limited we are as far as being a group under 50 with plans. So what we have been working on is moving up to over 50. So we've put some information together. Our benefits are offered to library employees, also to council, and so we have been approved to move up to the over 50 group. And with that, we're going to have more options that are available to us. We still do not have all of our numbers yet, but we are working on that. And, you know, as soon as we have some plans to bring forward, we certainly will do that. And we also have some very good news that we wanted to let you be aware of. With the Affordable Care Act, there are laws that are in place that an insurance company, they have to have a loss ratio that is under 80%. Aetna did not meet that in this geographical area, so by the end of September, the city should be receiving a check of slightly over $42,000. So I would answer any questions.
Does anybody have any questions for Dana? Not seeing any. Thank you, Dana.
Thank you.
Next, under staff reports, we'll hear from our building inspector, Bob Walker. Bob?
Good evening, council and mayor. Bob Walker, the building inspector here. First time I've used a speaker, so I'm going to get a little used to it. As up to September of this year, we've issued 22 single-family permits and three duplex permits, which would give actually a total of 28 units. That's on track to exceed last year's. And I believe already this month, we've issued three single-family permits this month. So that's kind, that's really good, because that's a good sign that builders are trying to get started before winter sets in. So far this year, we've issued approximately 252 permits, which is a random of many different permits. Otter water tank changeouts, electrical service changes, new air conditioners and so on, remodeling permits and along that line. I had a council member that asked me about 64, 44 East Parkview. I think I have a picture of that. That's a structure that we were looking at seriously to start condemnation. A couple bought that and they came in, and after discussing it with them, I was encouraged that they would get after it. And the next picture, would you, Jack? Anyway, I have a picture of the progress. There it is right now. If you notice, they're completely redecking it, and they've reboxed it, new siding, new windows, getting to put the new exterior on. They should have that done before winter settles in. I'm very impressed with that. That's a good sign. That's a, that's a house that we're going to be able to save. And I congratulate the couple that bought it, because they're really doing an investment there of time and money. That's good. That's really good news there. I'd like to kind of move on now to commercial projects. Could you bring up the picture? Masco, Masco, as you're aware of, was a business that relocated to Park City, out on 135, and they're taking advantage of that thorough way through there. This is a large distributing business of industrial maintenance supplies. And that project started in October of 16, and I issued an occupancy permit the 7/11/17, so it was really timely done. So anyway, that's a nice new business located up off of 77th Street. The Arby's, you're all aware, that opened up. It's our first business in the Echo Hills development area going in there, which is really, really great. They broke ground in March, and of August, they opened up for business in August of this year. It's a, and they did such a great job landscaping. I, I was just really impressed with their landscaping. And the last thing I'd like to talk to you about on a commercial is the McDonald's. We skipped that. Okay. I'll do the warehouse. Okay, the McDonald's. The McDonald's is renovating totally on the exterior and the interior. They totally took out the interior except for the kitchen area, and also they're going to be putting in a new play area, new equipment and so on. And my understanding, I was told, they're going to be totally opened back up on the 26th of this month, and their kitchen, however, they are open for the drive-through. So if, like my coffee, you can still go through and get that coffee there. That's pretty aggressive remodeling, pretty aggressive. And then the last item I wanted to talk about is the new warehouse that's going in. That's kind of a long view of it. That warehouse that's going in is going to be 500,000 square feet. It's going to be 1,500 feet long and approximately 325 feet wide. It's just a big warehouse. They're doing a lot of their rebar placement, footing digging during the day, and they've been pouring at night under lights, to be very aggressive, because if they're going to make it before the winter freeze, they got a lot of work to get accomplished. And so they're actually working pretty well around the clock on that project, which is pretty awesome, pretty good coordinating there. Do they have any questions? Yes?
7200 AerCap Drive, how do you access that?
There's going to be a road put in from 69th.
69th.
And also, it's going to loop across from the existing, the old Hayes building, because they have to have two accesses coming in there.
Does anybody else have any questions for Bob?
All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Bob. I just want to add a couple of things to what Bob was talking about with the housing permits. I was looking over 2016, and we were right on target, equal with where we were in 2016 to where we are in 2017. Fourth quarter 2016, we had a strong quarter, so we have a lot to keep up with to make sure we meet that. But with the three additional housing permits that have been pulled and speaking to the developers today, I think we'll be on target to meet or possibly exceed what we did in 2016. So that's good news, too. Thank you, Bob. The next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. Is there a motion?
George?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Joel?
I'll second.
Okay. I have a motion and a second. Not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. And the motion passes eight zero. I now call agenda item 8A, which is case number SU 2017-01. This is an application for the establishment of a sand mining use as a special use in the L1 light industrial district. First, I want to ask, before we proceed, I'll ask the council members if any of them tend to disqualify themselves from discussing and/or voting on this case because they have conflicts of interest or a particular bias in this matter. Has the city clerk received any protest positions on the case?
We have. We received 20 protest petitions that are in the notification area.
So do they constitute the statutory required, 20% necessitating the three-fourths vote of the governing body to approve this case?
Yes, they do.
Okay. Having determined that the valid protest position has been submitted to the clerk, I would remind the council members that seven favorable votes are necessary to approve the case. I now ask the council members if they have all received copies of the unapproved minutes of the planning commission for August 21st, 2017, which summarizes the hearing on the I now call on the zoning administrator, Jack Whitson, to provide us with a brief background report on the case.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The area here that I'm circling is the area that's under consideration tonight. That is, right now, a farmer's field. The area in blue that you'll see here, right there, goes around, that is the area that was notified on this particular case. The land use around the existing property, to the east across the Wichita Advantage Canal is light industrial. The area in green is agricultural. The area in red is commercial. The area in yellow is residential, and the purple area is vacant land. In other words, there's no houses or people living in that strip. The next area is the zoning map. The existing property that's being considered is currently light industrial. The land to the north, which is the purplish color is by Cedric County or City of Wichita Code, is limited industrial. The area in darker green is single-family 20, and that has to do with the square footage. And the lighter green is single-family 5, and that is based on the City of Wichita Code. The planning commission met and held a hearing, considered this matter. This is one that you may remember that you've already heard once before, several years ago. What has happened is that a person that is doing a special use permit has 12 months in which to proceed with that special use. That wasn't done in this case, so it was, it had expired. The landowner is bringing it back up and wants to reconsider the special use permit before you tonight. The planning commission reviewed the hearing. There are 24 conditions. They suggest it be placed on this property. They did go over 17 factors. That has always been recommended by the Kansas Supreme Court for planning commissions and councils to review. They approved those 17 factors. Even though they approved them, doesn't mean that you cannot change one or all 17 if you so wish. But they are presenting to you the 17 factors as they saw them. And that's my report, Mr. Mayor. If there's any questions, I'd be more glad to answer them.
Okay. Does any council member have anything for Jack? Not seeing any. I have one person signed up to speak on this, Jonathan Buster, if you'd please come up.
Thanks, guys, for letting me talk. My name is Jonathan Buster. Me and my wife, we actually lived in Park City before moving to 825 West 61st Street North, just north of the area that we're talking about. I want you guys to vote no on this, because there's going to be a lot of trucks, which is going to affect that street. There's going to be a lot of noise pollution, and there's going to be a lot of air pollution. We're starting a family, and there's also a safety issue when you have this many trucks on that little over-road, surrounded by residents, which I am, so I'd like for you to vote no, but thank you very much for letting me talk.
Thank you. Assuming that the council has received all the information they need on this case, I will outline the choices provided under state statutes for council action, KSA 12-757. One, by a three-fourths majority vote, adopt to, adopt to approve the findings and factors recommendation of the planning commission on case number SU 2017-01, and approve ordinance number 933-2013. Two, by a two-thirds majority vote, move to override the planning commission's recommendation, describe in detail the findings and factors supporting the motion, attach appropriate conditions, if any, and approve or disapprove the ordinance number. Or three, by a three-fourths majority vote, return the recommendation to the planning commission for further consideration at its next regular meeting with a statement specifying the bias for the council's failure to approve or disapprove the recommendation. Does the council understand there are three choices? I would entertain a motion.
I've got a question for Jack. Jack, what would be the ramifications if we voted against this? Well, the developer can take you to court within 30 days, and you will have to justify in front of the district court your decision to decline. Isn't that correct, Doug?
Well, I'm not sure I understand the question. Either side has a right to appeal your, your decision to the district court. What specific question did you have?
What would be the legal ramifications to the council if we voted against this?
There's no legal ramification.
It's just if it gets voted down, it has to be done by the parameters I outlined. And if it gets voted down, we have to identify specific reasons of the finding of fact and return that back to the planning commission, or we can completely override it and return it back to the planning commission. But we have to be able to outline and identify what findings of fact we disagree with before we send that back to the planning commission.
Okay. Okay.
Jim?
Don't want to question it too much, because the planning commission's already spent a lot of time on this, but there was a notification area to the, to the residents around it. One spoke tonight. What was the consensus of the neighborhood?
You have to look at the 17 factors. You cannot look at crowds and make your decision. The Supreme Court of State of Kansas says that it's a property rights issue. Many councils have disapproved zoning cases based on the crowd and their anger and their frustration. And the Kansas Supreme Court says that's not how you approve zoning. And so they came up with these 17 factors, which is in your packet. They said you need to base your decisions on those 17 factors only. And that's what the planning commission did.
So Jim, to come back and maybe clarify a little bit more, as I outlined earlier, there was a petition. It did meet the requirements that forces the council to approve it by a three-fourths vote. That's the difference in the petition that was filed. Okay. Good. Okay, I'm good. Okay. Are there any other questions? John?
Number eight of the findings of fact, it indicates a screen plan will be necessary. What, what is that?
Okay, when industrial tracks are next to residential property, they have to be screened. Okay? Now, this is a, this has been zoned limited industrial, but there are residents there. And so the planning commission made as one of their conditions that it has to be screened from these residents. And that could be done multitude of ways. Typically, they have to put a fence around the site anyway. They can put the plastic slats in that, or they could put up a big privacy fence, but they have to screen from the residential area. Now, those on the other side of Armstrong, that would not necessarily hold, because you have a railroad and a road separated.
A screen could be a concrete barrier wall, a mound of dirt, I mean, it could be...
Yes, but it'd have to be of a sufficient height, like at least six foot high.
And who, who, who determined what that screen is? I mean, is this...
Well, he has, they, they have a certain option. Usually that's by... Usually, that's by fence. They have to put a fence around this land anyway. I just assume that they would use plastic slats in the fence. Essentially, you've got to put a fence up anyway, according to the conditions. Now, I guess they could put something beyond just the fence as well. Now, on the north side, there is, let me go back here, and maybe I can bring this up a little bit. But right along here, right along here is a very dense hedge row.
Say that again?
Along there where I squiggled in line is a heavily planted hedge row.
Okay.
One way to look at this would be when we did the scrap metal, remember they had plantings and stuff they had to do for noise reduction and screening to provide a barrier for that similar.
Okay. In reading the minutes from the planning commission, it sounded like some of the residents were, traffic was a big issue going through over on Armstrong and into the City of Wichita. What, I mean, is there anything? I know you said in the minutes that they could work with the City of Wichita because unfortunately, they're in the City of Wichita, but what, was there something agreed upon on that?
Well, we have no jurisdiction over those roadways. They would have to go to, all these people are in the City of Wichita, by the way. And so they would have to go to their city and ask for whatever regulation they could put on those roads to keep trucks off of it. Now, Sixty-first Street is basically a truck route. Okay? So as far as, at least to Seneca, the Sixty-first Street has been and will probably continue to be used for industrial traffic. But beyond that, once it gets into the City of Wichita, City of Wichita can set up such regulation as they deem necessary to try to keep the trucks off of it.
I guess I'm just wondering why I would think that most of the access in and out of this place would be, I mean, the location of the plant gives them good access to I-135 and then route them through and around the city and the county. Is there something west that would take them that direction?
No, the dead end, Sixty-first Street dead ends to the west. So the only way to get out of this area would be either Seneca or Armstrong. Or Interurban, but I don't, yeah, I don't know what the developer would do in that case, but if he's, if the developer's smart, he'd stay on Sixty-first Street. But like I say, we don't control those streets, Valley Center, Wichita does, so these people would have to go to their city and request restrictions to keep the trucks off those roads. If they don't do that, then unless there's some other regulation I'm not aware of, they would, they could go on those roads.
Okay. And part of the planning commission implemented a fifteen-year use on this, is that correct?
Correct. There should be twenty-four distinct conditions. If you look favorably in on this case, part of your motion should be to adopt those twenty-four conditions and approve the seventeen factors of fact, along with the ordinance, if you decide to approve.
Sure, thank you. Jack? Anybody else? George?
Yeah, Jack, is this something we brought up four years ago?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. The groundwater, the digging, how does that affect the water, the wells that people have in their houses? Is that going to affect that?
Well, the developer's here, he can, I mean, his spokesman's here, he could answer that question. I don't like to speak for the developer. Tim Austin is here for the developer.
Tim, did you want to come up and answer that, or try to?
Good evening, Tim Austin with Call Valley Engineering. And what was the question again, Commissioner, on the water?
George, you want to answer the, ask the question one more time?
The effect, the effects of the digging on the groundwater wells, how would it affect the neighborhood homes there in that area?
Yeah, we received a water right permit from Kansas Division of Water Resources, and their conclusions was it would not have an effect on it. It's, the difference is, is the water loss is through evaporation. If you're familiar with how wells work in groundwater, there's a drawdown effect. Open pits don't have a drawdown effect.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
Might I add something, since you've allowed the developer to say something? I was one of the residents that spoke at the planning commission meeting.
I'll let the council make a decision, but they didn't sign up for the agenda item.
I was told that I was allowed to speak tonight, and I'm objecting to the fact that...
If somebody would like to make a motion to allow him to speak for five minutes, I would...
I'll make a motion to allow the president to speak.
Okay, motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And the motion passes.
Thank you for allowing me to insert into the meeting. I appreciate that. If you look back in the notes from the planning commission...
Who's speaking?
This is, I'm Todd McCutcheon. BJ McCutcheon and Gary McCutcheon are my parents, and they live at eight thirty-one West Sixty-first North. At least, my mother does. My father has recently passed away, so I'm speaking for what he would have done. At the planning commission meeting, I did bring up a report that was done, a site survey. And so if you look back in the notes, in that site survey, it did say that there was a distinct possibility of groundwater contamination. So the developer saying that it doesn't isn't the full story. You really need to look back in that planning, in that site survey report. And the document number is listed in the meeting notes.
Thank you.
Thanks. Anybody else? Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion. We approve the seventeen findings of fact and also include, adopt the conditions of approval set forth by the planning commission titled Attachment B.
Okay, is there a second? Gary?
Second.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. Not seeing any further discussion. I'll assume everybody remembers what needs to happen as a council from your three options. Daniella, would you call the roll?
John Leonard?
Aye.
George Glover?
Nay.
Gary Aldrich?
Aye.
Melvin Kerr?
Nay.
Tom Jones?
Aye.
George Capps?
Aye.
Joel Pumphrey?
Aye.
Jim Schrader?
Aye.
And that gets us six-two, and we need to have seven. Doug? I would assume the two people that voted no need to explain why they voted no from the findings of fact.
That would be helpful.
Okay, so George, I'd like you to explain to us why you voted no from the seventeen findings of fact, what your recommendation is back to the planning commission.
For me, it's about, I mean, when we talk about traffic and...
George, I need you to be specific about which one of the seventeen findings of fact that caused you to vote no. Doug?
This is a vote of the governing body, which includes you.
Okay. All right, then I'll vote aye. And that will change it to seven-two, which will meet the requirements for the three-fourth approval of the council. Persons aggrieved by the final decisions of the council in this matter have thirty days after the evaluating ordinance is published in which to appeal to the district court. So I want to take time to thank everybody for participating in this. You're welcome to stay for the remainder of the council meeting. And I now call agenda item eight B, which is consider an ordinance amending, creating section eighteen dash one oh six of the municipal code of the City of Park City, Kansas, amending sections nine hundred and three dot two dot three and nine oh three dot two dot eight of the two thousand and three international fire code pertaining to the requirements for an automatic sprinkler system. Doug or Bob?
I'm Bob Walker of the Building Inspector, Park City. What's going on here is that the code, under the two thousand and three, for what we call an F-one occupancy, which means it's manufacturing of airplane parts and so on, it states that it's twelve thousand square feet for the floor area. After twelve thousand square feet, they either have to put in a firewall or sprinkle. All right, what we're doing is we're lining up with Civic County in Wichita, because they amended this code to sixteen thousand. They added four thousand additional square feet. That would allow that person developing it or building that structure to build at sixteen thousand square feet without having to sprinkle to use for an F-one or an S-one occupancy. S-one is storage, by the way. So we're just lining ourselves basically up with Civic County and Wichita, which they oversee like seven different small towns with the same code. That's what's happening here.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions for Bob? Doug, is there anything you want to add?
The only thing I'd add is the only change in the two A and B sections that you have in front of you on this first ordinance that changes eighteen dash one oh six is, we've changed, in subsection one in both of them, we've changed the number twelve thousand in the square meters to sixteen thousand in the appropriate square meter number. That's the only change.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions for Doug? Tom?
I'd like to motion to approve amendment creation of, or section eighteen one oh six of municipal code, City of Park City.
Okay, Melvin?
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Not seeing any further discussion. Daniella, would you call the roll?
John Leonard?
Aye.
George Glover?
Aye.
Gary Aldrich?
Aye.
Melvin Kerr?
Aye.
Tom Jones?
Aye.
George Capps?
Aye.
Joel Pumphrey?
Aye.
Jim Schrader?
Aye.
And that ordinance passes eight-zero?
That is ordinance one oh three three dash two thousand seventeen.
Okay. That moves on to item C, which is consider an ordinance amending creation sections four dash one thirty-four of the municipal code of the City of Park City, Kansas, amending sections nine oh three dot two dot three and nine oh three dot two dot eight of the two thousand and six international building code pertaining to the requirements for automatic sprinkler systems.
Again, this aligns with what we just adopted with the fire code. It increases the twelve thousand to sixteen thousand, which is additional four thousand square feet to line the two codes together. That's the building code and the fire code.
Okay. Doug, do you have anything now? Good. Does anybody have any questions for Bob or Doug? Not seeing any. Is there a recommendation from the council? John?
Motion to approve item C.
And Gary?
I'll second.
Okay, we've got a motion and a second. Not seeing any further discussion. Daniella, would you call the roll?
Aye.
Aye.
Gary Aldrich?
Aye.
Melvin Kerr?
Aye.
Tom Jones?
Aye.
George Capps?
Aye.
Joel Pumphrey?
Aye.
Jim Schrader?
Aye.
And that motion passes eight-zero?
That is ordinance one oh three two, excuse me, one zero three two dash two thousand seventeen.
That brings us to the next item on the agenda, which is item D. Consider the purchase of a radio amplifier for the police department from First Wireless Inc. at a cost of fourteen thousand, four hundred and thirty-nine dollars and ten cents from the two thousand and seventeen general budget, general fund budget for the police department capital outlay. Chief?
Mr. Mayor and council members, this evening, I have an item to bring to you. When the building was under construction, I know I looked at it and saw the steel studs after they got all those up, and it occurred to me that it looked like a steel cage. And we found out after we moved into the building that our portable radios don't work inside the building very well. It's very spotty. There are places in the building where they do work, and then there are other places where they don't work at all. Fortunately, we have speakers built into the ceiling in the police department. They weren't really created to monitor calls all the time. They were created for us to be able to kind of keep that in the background where we could hear it and be aware of what's going on. But the officers, a lot of times when they're trying to answer the dispatcher, you'll see them hold the radios up and they're searching around, trying to find a signal like a cellphone out in the country. After we saw what the problem was, I got ahold of First Wireless, which is the Motorola dealer here in Wichita. All of our radio equipment, both portable radios and car radios, is Motorola. That's the, almost the only brand of radio that's used throughout the county here on our countywide radio system. I asked the representative to come out and do a radio signal survey throughout the building, and I think that's included with your, the supplemental packet that was given to you there. But you can see that the signal was rated throughout the building in seven areas, and it was not good in one area, it was bad in the other six areas. So I asked them for a solution, and I asked them for what would be the least expensive solution that would be reliable, that we could count on. And that is what they call a bidirectional amplifier. What they do is string a piece of, they call it leaky coax. I've never heard the term before, but it's basically like an antenna wire that would run the full length of the building in the back, the south hallway through the police department. And then off of that, they would run three legs. One would come down this hall towards the council chambers. One would go in the middle of the building, we're behind the training room essentially, and then one on the east side of the building over by the break room. That amplifies both the incoming and the outgoing signal. It's something that's built to be reliable, because every time someone keys up their microphone, it also transmits on that amplifier. And likewise, whenever the dispatcher or anyone else talks on the radio, it transmits back, so it receives lots and lots of workout. The funding that I recommend for this, as you can see, the price that was quoted to this was fourteen thousand, four hundred and thirty-nine, ten. The price, I'm sorry, the fund that I recommend for this is the capital outlay fund for the police department, which right now is not allocated for anything specific. That would cover the full cost of this expense. It's in our budget. It would allow, I'll be bringing, as you can see on the agenda, a couple of other items to you here as well, but it would allow some additional money to be left over for one of those projects if you approve this purchase. Again, this is something that we really couldn't foresee. Even if we had foreseen it, there was really no way for us to avoid it. It's very important that the officers be able to transmit and receive on their radios while they're in the building. So I'd be glad to entertain any questions that you might have.
Does anybody have any questions for the chief?
I have a question, not for the chief, but as far as the building, when we completed the building, was there any CIP money left in the building? CIP?
It's, it's running low and well-protected right now. It would not, without us going back to the CIP fund and bringing up some other projects, we would not be able to cover that.
Okay. Melvin?
By curing this problem, maybe this for the IT guys, this isn't going to create another problem somewhere else, is it?
Sorry, Melvin.
You know, by fixing the problems we have with the radios, it won't mess up anything else, right? Wireless in the building?
Chief, do you have any type of answer for that?
No, I mean, I'm not the tech guy.
Yeah.
I, all I can say is that I have a great deal of confidence in that the representative that we worked with, who works for First Wireless, was the head radio technician for Cedric County for quite a number of years. He went into private business here with First Wireless within the last year or so, but so I have a great deal of confidence in his ability, his knowledge. We've dealt with him many, many, many times, so if there was a problem, I feel well assured that they would take care of it.
Okay.
But I don't anticipate any problems.
I make a motion, we approve the fourteen thousand, four thirty-nine, ten. I make a motion we approve the $14,439.10 for the radio amplifier.
From the funding source?
From the general fund of the police department.
Capital outlay?
Capital outlay.
Okay. That's second. George, second? Is there any further discussion?
I just have clarification, the police department fund in the general fund is what we're talking about.
Yes, that's correct. It is capital outlay, which is under the police department.
Okay. There is a motion and a second. Not seeing any further discussion. All those signify, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And the motion passes eight zero. The next item on the agenda, which is item E, is consider the purchase of a phone recorder for the police department from the Voice Products at a cost of $11,997, with $35,7030 from the 2017 general fund budgeted police department capital outlay fund and the balance of $8,426.70 from the 2017 budget MTB fund. Chief?
Mr. Mayor, I think what would be best is for me to give you a little bit of history on where we came to where we are today. We've had a phone recorder system at the old police station, at the former city hall, for many, many years. The system that we had was purchased, I think, around 2008. I had that in my notes here, but it died just a few months before we moved out. And we were without a phone recorder system for several months, but we didn't feel like it was wise to go, they're expensive, we didn't want to go buy something and then find out that, without knowing what kind of phone system we were going to have in this building, we didn't want to buy something and have it not be compatible. So we did without for several months. When we initially got bids for a phone recorder system for this building, we didn't know at that point in time still what type of phone system we would have, digital or analog, basically. The bids that we got then were based on the analog phone system that we had in the old building, which was essentially six phone lines. If you combined what we had at the old city hall plus at the squadron there at 53rd and Broadway, it was six phone lines. That brought the price way down, because it was only considered six lines to be recorded. The phone system that we went with in this building is voice over internet, so it's a digital system. What, the definition of a line, this was my education, what I learned, a line on a VoIP phone system is your phone. So every phone is, has its own phone number and is considered a line. So the price of the phone system to cover the entire building just skyrocketed. It was way out of sight. So we had to go back and get another quote. We initially quoted, got three different quotes from major companies. Two of those were much, much higher than the one that I'm presenting, the company that I'm presenting to you today, which is Voice Products here in Wichita. Excuse me. And so because, for that reason, we did not go back to them and get a second quote, because they were so far beyond what Voice Products is. Voice Products is a local company that's well-known here in this, in this area. They do training here onsite, because they don't have very far to travel to do it. If we have maintenance problems, they're here, we can depend on them to come out. I've dealt with them previously in my other career and found that they're a professional business, they do a good job. The reason for the phone recorder system, for me to explain that, obviously, we make a lot of phone calls, both incoming and outgoing calls, that are considered evidence. In fact, all of our phone records could be considered evidence. But a lot of times, we're speaking with people over the phone, who may be suspects, victims, witnesses. Those conversations can be critical in a case. And if we don't have those recorded, it's becoming like police work in general with video. If it's not recorded, it's almost like it didn't happen. It becomes a matter of dispute. So to have that evidence is very, very critical for us. I don't like the fact that it's so expensive. It seems like a lot of money. It is a lot of money. Essentially, this voice recorder, what it is, is a server with redundant drives, several drives in it, so that if one of them fails, you don't lose all your data, you'll have it backed up. And then it records 16 phones, and we broke that down to just what we consider to be the essential phones that we could, could not live without having those recorded. We didn't, we didn't put any extra phones on there that we felt like, well, this is a spare room, or we're not going to use this very often. These are just the phones that would be used on a regular basis. So we've tried to bring the cost down as much as possible. If you look at the quote that's in your packet, it can be a little bit confusing, so I might explain that. What I'm presenting to you tonight is the outright purchase of the equipment. The equipment itself is $11,997. That would be the full purchase price. But what is quoted later, it's on the second page of the, it says Voice Products in the upper left corner, it's right behind the, well, I don't know where it is in your packet, I'm sorry, but it would be in the supplemental packet. On the second page, it has a breakdown at the top there of general maintenance agreement. So one year of warranty is included, so the first year would be covered in the purchase price. After that, it's $25,84 per year for the next five years. The reason they show that out to five years here is because if you go down to the next box, it has a five-year lease term, and that's what, it shows an annual payment of $5,056. So what they're, what they're presenting here, it's not real clear, but they're presenting a purchase option and then a five-year lease purchase. So the purchase option is the $11,000 figure that I gave you. And then we would have the warranty included in that for the first year. We would have to cover the warranty for next year in a 2018 budget, and I think we could do that out of the existing police budget that's already been approved. Then we would have to look at budgeting for the next four years for the warranty for the remaining period. They show it out to five years, because they're trying to show what it would cost, total price for the purchase and for the warranty. So they break it down into the annual payments of $5,056 if the council chose to do a five-year lease. What I'm recommending is the outright purchase, and then the next year of the warranty that would not be covered would come due late in 2018. We could cover that from the police department budget, and then we would figure that into the budget for the future years for the maintenance agreement. Be glad to answer your questions if you, if you have any. I know that's maybe a little bit confusing. It was confusing to me when I first looked at it.
All right. George?
You said entire building, now you were only referring to the police department, right?
Yes. Yes, sir. Initially, what we looked at was recording the whole, the whole building. At least, that was what we looked at in the beginning. And like I said, once we realized with the digital phone system, the price was going to skyrocket, we had to cut that back to what we thought was just the essential function, which was the police department.
Okay. Anybody else have any questions for the chief? Tom?
Well, I have an issue with the funding on the NPVE fund in 2017. Is there any way we can rework this out of your budget? I mean, like at the end of the year, you turn money back typically and fund it out of that.
I guess I'd have to defer to, to Jack and Danielle on that issue, so.
I understand the need for this, but I'm going to have trouble approving it using the MTBE money, so.
Okay. Jack?
If you take money that he is possibly giving back, then what you're doing is reducing your carryover funds for 2018, your beginning balance. So that's the ramification of doing that.
Well, I have a similar, I have a problem using MTBE money on, you know, you make a habit of doing this to fund your budget, just like he was talking about, then what are you going to do when that's gone? Because that money's not going to last forever. And I have a real problem with using that on a budget item. I realize we did it once last year, and I thought that was a one-time deal. But it's kind of like in the military, when you volunteer, once you volunteer, then it becomes your job. Well, we're going down a slippery slope here.
Well, you got a choice here. You can risk reducing your carryforward, which is, is not necessarily the best thing if we ever have to bond, because they look at what, what kind of reserves we have with our carryforward. You know, it's, it's kind of a gamble at this point as to whether or not he would have, how much funds he would have left over at the end of the year anyway. We don't know that at this point, and I don't think the chief could tell you at this point. He typically gives back money, and George knows that by buying a gator, you know, sometimes he does. But anyway.
You'd never forget that.
You know, but we're talking about two reserve accounts. One, the, the operating reserve, or two, the MTB reserve. I don't know if Daniella, you want to add anything to it? But both of these are reserves, so you're going to hit one of the reserves, one way or the other.
Jack, one, one thing I'd like to say, you know, like last year, when we used that MTBE money for, for that, to do the bonus and stuff.
But we're talking about the phone system, George.
Well, right.
Okay.
But this, we agreed that this is going to be a one-time deal. And somewhere, you know, it's, I don't know, forget it.
Yeah, how much is left in the MTB fund, Jack? The reserve?
Over a million dollars.
Okay.
Is that correct, Daniella? Almost 1.2 million.
And what did we start out with? When we originally got the settlement?
Six million.
Okay.
But we built a library, a public works building, and a few things.
I also have trouble with that coming out of the MBT money. Is there a way that we can put that on a loan, and then capital outlay in 2018, it comes back into the MBT? Police Department MBT?
We can transfer into general fund from MTBE, or vice versa. That is an allowed transfer, so if that's something.
Transfer from the police capital outlay in 2018 budget back into the MBT money?
Yes, but it needs to be budgeted. It needs to be a budgeted transfer, and we did not budget for that for 2018. So you can make an amendment next year to do that.
So it'd be 2019 budgeting?
We, we could budget it for, yeah.
Okay.
I guess as a funding source, is there anything from the alcohol tax? No. We checked into that. We can't, it wouldn't meet the criteria.
Oh. Yeah.
You could, I have a suggestion. You could go ahead and take it out of the MTB fund. If everybody, I'm going to start squeezing them in October not to spend money, and if the overall money comes back to the general fund in excess of $120,000, then we'll reimburse MTBE with that. If they don't, then we can transfer out of the 2019 budget back into MTB. Does that make sense?
You say squeeze everybody, is that every department or just?
Every department. I start squeezing them.
It's always every department.
I start squeezing them in October, and I don't want to get involved in telling all my secrets, but they tend to look at how much money they got left in their budgets and say, boy, I'd like to spend all this money for the end of the year. And I kind of keep them from doing that. And allow them to spend only things of necessity, only. I guess that's best, about the best way I could put it.
All right. Daniella?
I would, I would make a, if you are not willing to make this purchase through the MTBE funds, I would recommend you do the lease and pay the $2,800 bucks in interest over that five-year term. The reason I'm stating that is if you do spend the money out of police budget and we find that we do have cash carryover, you're going to spend it again by transferring it to MTBE. So we're double dib, we're inflating our expenditures in general fund. So I would recommend you do this one time through MTBE, or instead of divvying it up, doing the lease.
One thing we can look at too, is we're getting the $46,000 back for the health insurance. When it comes in, we can roll it into the MTB account, kind of way. Because that money's coming back, and that would cover these costs.
Right.
And that would simplify what we're doing here.
Yes, that would be great accounting-wise.
Okay. John, did you?
When do we get that check?
I think we're talking September, end of September.
Four, fifteen, twelve.
Yeah. Yeah, 42,000.
I guess, in a way, I just kind of hesitate on, on putting that as a contingency, because the check's not in the bank yet. I feel like maybe we should go ahead and make the motion to approve it, and then maybe at the next meeting, after we receive the check, we make that.
Well, yeah, I mean, I'm not, I'm saying, looking forward, it would be cleaner if the motion was approved as presented, and then everybody on the council just kind of acknowledging when that check comes in, we'd, we'd also bring that back to the council, that that money would then go back to the MTB fund.
All right. With that being said, I, I'll make a motion to approve item E as presented with the funding sources named.
Okay. Is there a second? Gary?
Second.
Is there any further discussion? Not seeing any. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
And that motion passes five, three.
Yeah, I said no.
George, Melvin, Tom? Okay. The next item on the agenda is item F, which is consider recruiting incentive for up to four police officers at $2,500 each for a total of $10,000 to be paid out of the 2017 MTB fund. Chief?
Mr. Mayor, we have currently, in the police department, we have two openings, and we just filled one. I introduced Shane Alexander, who's a code enforcement officer, who's going to be going into that position, but hasn't done so yet. After the council approved this bonus last year, I went back and, and talked to the four people that we hired with the bonus, because I really wanted to know what kind of difference it made. I'll be honest, I, I don't like coming up here and asking for money. I don't like it. I don't think anyone does. But I wanted to know before I came and asked you for this, what kind of effect it had, if it was really worthwhile or not. And so the general consensus of, we already had one person employed, kind of like Shane, who was a code enforcement officer and then moved into police position, and that was the first one. So that was done kind of retroactively as a matter of fairness, because it was done at this, right at the same time that all this happened. So, but the other, and she said that this was not, I guess I gave that away by, by gender, but she did not feel that it was a big factor, but then, on the other hand, she was already employed here, was already going through the process, and the bonus was done more as a matter of fairness, so that we didn't hire three people after her and give them a bonus when she didn't receive one. So, and I did that not just on my own, I did in consultation with the city administrator and the HR. city administrator and the HR manager and so forth. But, uh, the other three, I talked to them and all three of them agreed that that was not the motivating factor, why they chose to come to Park City to be a police officer. Uh, however, they all said they felt like it indicated to them that the city valued their service and valued them as an employee and they saw it as part of the, uh, overall compensation. They also felt like it made the ads, the advertising that we did stick out from the, the crowd. And, and one officer in particular, he told me that although he had already made the decision and, uh, like I said, the bonus to him was not the major factor, uh, his classmates, sixty-some-odd, uh, police officers from other departments who were at the academy, he said it was a big deal with them, uh, because they had not seen that anywhere else and it was a very, a big attention getter, I'll put it that way, with everyone else. It was a, a subject of conversation. So, uh, to go back to the issue of recruiting, I just want to reemphasize, we're still in a position where it is very difficult to hire police officers, good qualified police officers. And I'll tell you that I could have already had all these positions filled if we were willing to bend our standards and, uh, hire people who were already certified even, uh, who've already been to the academy. Maybe they weren't disqualified from being a police officer, but they had things in their background that indicated they were going to be a problem. And I think very possibly, some of them that we have done backgrounds on, uh, if we'd hired them, they were, there was nothing that disqualified them, but we may have been sued. I may have been sued. Uh, it may have been a disciplinary problem and honestly, they may have been someone that would stay here, uh, forever because they would find difficulty in getting a job somewhere else. So, uh, not to dwell on that though, but we're still facing a great, uh, difficulty in finding qualified police officers. And this situation is, it's actually gotten worse since I came to you last year because the employment situation has gotten better, uh, just as all employers are facing a problem of finding qualified people. I hear this from business everywhere. Uh, the police recruiting situation was really bad to start with and now we're facing the fact that, um, employment is way up, unemployment's way down. So this has aggravated the situation. So if you go to HRE partners where we advertise and you look at all the police positions, law enforcement positions across the state that are open today, there are a bunch. So it's really the market for, uh, people who are qualified, they can pick where they want to go. The really good people can go, uh, and just basically choose where they want to work, the best candidates. So anything that we can do that makes us stand out from that crowd is helpful. It's helpful to the city and it's a matter of finding the best people that we possibly can to wear the uniform and serve the community because that's, that's what it's all about. You know, we don't want people here that are, are going to create a problem, that are going to abuse their authority and you've seen all the things on the news. And, uh, I've been very committed to trying to find, uh, the best candidates that we possibly can to, uh, to serve the community here. So, uh, I appreciate the fact that the council made the pay raise last year and I know it was a difficult thing to do with, uh, the fact that other city employees did not get a raise. But that was, I think, the biggest difference in our recruiting last year was the pay raise. There's, there's no doubt about that. But as we go out to the market now to look for two more, I would prefer to go out there with the best package that we can. The nice thing about a bonus is that it is a one-time expense and it's not an ongoing expense like, uh, raising salary again or something of that nature. So with that in mind, I would ask that you consider, uh, renewing the bonus again for two open positions, the one who has been promoted from code enforcement to police officer as a matter of fairness, and then one for the future, just so we have that, uh, I wouldn't have to come back to you again and ask for that. Right now, we don't know that we're going to have an opening and I hope we don't have any openings, but, so I, I'd be glad to answer your questions.
Chief, can you cover one thing because I, it's really important here, just how the bonus breakdown was?
Sure.
Because we structured that bonus for retention and I think it'd be a good thing to remind the council of.
Yes, I appreciate that. Uh, it's the, it pays out differently depending on whether a person is already a commissioned police officer or whether they come to us or not commissioned, have to go to the academy. If they're already commissioned, they make, uh, a thousand dollars, I'm sorry, the first full paycheck is five hundred dollars. But they're coming into us off the street with experience already, being certified. At the end of their field training period, which is generally, it'd be a little less than three and a half months, that'd be the normal training for somebody that hadn't been a police officer, so a little less than three and a half months. A thousand dollars and then at the end of two years of service at Park City, another thousand dollars. So it's twenty-five hundred dollars for both, but it pays out differently. For someone who's not a police officer already, uh, they have to graduate from the academy first fourteen weeks and then once they graduate successfully, there's a thousand dollar bonus. They go through the field training, about three and a half months, five hundred dollar bonus and then after two years of employment here, then the final thousand dollar payment. So it is structured, uh, not only as an attraction, but also to help with retention. They have to work for us for one year after we hire them, send them to the academy by state law or else the agency that hired them away from us, if it was another law enforcement agency, would have to pay for part of their training costs. But this helps to extend that.
So I think, uh, another thing too to, to remind ourselves is, um, we talk about the extensive training that they go through and the expense that we have and we've talked about it multiple times about trying to retain those people that we've trained and put out on the streets for us. And this is another tool of retention for, you know, some of those officers that we bring on. Go ahead, Chief.
One point to, I wanted to make on that is when we hire someone who's not, uh, not a certified police officer, we have to send them to the academy. If you count the wages that we spend, uh, to train them, we're talking about the, the academy and then the field training after that, and then we count the, uh, plus the benefits, plus the equipment that we give them that really can't be reused, it amounts to about fifty thousand dollars. And that's without, essentially without them being a benefit to us in the sense of being fully trained, you know, being able to function on their own. I'm not saying while they're in training, they're not a benefit, but we're putting money into them up to that point. So just to the point to get them on their own, fifty thousand dollars. If we lose them, we've lost all that. Plus they get training ongoing after that.
And this might catch you off guard, but maybe you can do the math in your head. So we approved this before for ten thousand dollars. Could you give me a rough guess on how much we've paid out of that, um, so far? I'm guessing around thirty-five hundred.
I, I'd have to put a pencil to this, sir.
Okay.
I wouldn't want to guess.
So the other, the other part I just want to point out is the longevity of it, that it runs out, you know, so it takes out twenty-four months before somebody actually gets the entire twenty-five hundred. Um, I know when the chief originally brought this up, um, he was just thinking about doing the two officers and I actually pushed him to go ahead and put down for the other two positions that may or may not happen in the future, which we hope don't. Um, so I, I just want to take some of that that, that I've asked the chief to go for four instead of two. Tom?
I know it's a little late for next year, but I would assume this is going to be a contingency line in the future? Non-spending contingency line unless you have to, uh, or a budget line, I mean, in case, only if you had to spend it?
Yes, sir, I, that's the way I would prefer it. I, I don't, I don't, really don't like, uh, as you said, spending money from what's supposed to be a reserve fund, but.
Well, that would be a reserve fund that you wouldn't spend unless you needed it, but at least it would be budgeted.
Yes, yes, that's correct.
So it's definitely something that we could look forward in twenty-nineteen budget planning?
That's the way I would prefer to do that.
Okay. George?
Uh, chief of the, you have two openings now for?
Yes.
What happened to the folks that were in those positions?
Uh, unfortunately, they're personnel issues and I can't.
So they just, I, they didn't leave for a better job, they just, it's something else?
I can't, uh, I'd be in trouble with our HR director if I said anything, so.
Thank you.
Okay.
I know. The last thing they, on the last item, uh, the money was going to come back into the MTBE fund. Is this going to be, that's ten thousand dollars. If we approve that, is it going to come back into?
Well, if we put the forty-two thousand dollar check in there, it would cover this.
Then it would cover this too.
Yeah.
And, you know, I, I, my heart's with the chief there. I know it's like standing there burning ash for money. I've been here, done that, it's hard to do and I appreciate, I appreciate it, I really do. Uh, but if that money's going to come back in, uh, I'd go ahead and make the motion.
Okay. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Okay. Any further discussion? Not seeing any. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
And that motion passes six-two. Thank you, chief.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
The next item on the agenda is just governing body reports and we'll start with Jim.
I have no remarks tonight.
Joe?
Nothing.
Okay. George?
Yeah.
Tom?
I have a couple. One, I had an opportunity to attend a meeting day with the county commissioner and they got hacked over the weekend. I think everybody's aware of that. Uh, stuff that got compromised was stuff that was being used over the weekend, anything that got backed up on Friday that did not, is not compromised at this time. Just kind of want to give the city a heads up. I know we back things up constantly and that will save us because there is a lot of hacking and stuff going on right now. Uh, the other thing is fifty-third street's winding down. Uh, there was a barrier, a guardrail at Primrose and Fifty-third that kept, kept going over the side into the ditch and that was removed and never put back. Are they going to put one back there? It's gone. And we have had cars go down in that drainage ditch, uh, in the past where they missed a corner and go around and go off.
Um, Jack, can you look into that and report back to us on the next council meeting?
Uh, two other things today, uh, Andover and Mays were in the meeting and Andover's going to have a amplifier going by, uh, sometime in February, looking three to five concerts a year. Mayor Mays said the same thing, they're going to have a free concert this weekend and they're looking at an amplifier too. So there's a lot of activity going on here on entertainment and stuff, so just wanted to let everybody know that.
Okay.
Melvin?
I'm good.
I have nothing this evening.
George?
Yeah, I'd like to thank everybody who came out to our, uh, ice cream social, had a good time, good crowd. Also had a chance to check out the new Arby's. If you haven't yet, go ahead and check it out. They had a lot of specials, a lot of good deals going on, so check it out. Thank you.
John?
Um, I, I guess I just thought of this as we're going around the table here, but, uh, Park City Pride's doing the food truck event. Uh, I have down the twenty-third, uh, September twenty-third and it'll be over on the strip mall here that, uh, they have a lot of food trucks coming in and some music and stuff like that, so I think they have it on their Facebook page, Park City Pride's Facebook page, but it's supposed to be a pretty good community event. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Tom?
I have a question. Is that something we can put on the sign?
Yes.
Because it's the only way we can get the message out all the way, so.
It will be right, Daniel.
Yes, it will. It's also on the Park City Facebook and we're promoting it as well.
Thanks, Daniel.
Make a motion, will you, Jones?
There's a second?
No, second. Second.
We'll give it to George.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And the motion passes eight-two. Thank you.